Lakeville Planning Board to order for Thursday, July 11th, 2019. And we'll pass 7:30. Number one on the agenda is to review the following zoning board of appeal petitions. For one, Anchor Sign 56 Main Street.
Is someone here to present that? The engineer, right?
No.
No, they don't show us?
This is just a recommendation.
Oh.
Because this person is an engineer.
Okay.
This is an engineer.
We had this for site and review, and this is exactly what they showed us before. I would actually need to recommend more.
Isn't it almost the right square footage? It's just some height variations and...
It's bigger, but it's not a lot bigger.
I thought it was 32 square feet was what they allowed.
And they're...
Is that for the one that's out on the street? That one? The one that's post-mounted?
It's the one, this one. No, this is the one on the building.
There's two of them, right? There's sign, there's the one that's going to go in the building and then this one that's going to go on the street.
Yeah.
Sign A is on the building, sign B is on the street.
I ask.
Well, I'll say the same thing I said when we originally saw this plan, when they presented. I do respect a property owner's right to do what they need to do with their property, but I don't like the design of the store, I mean, the design, the aesthetic on the outside, but we don't have an architectural standard to tell them to do otherwise. And when they stood in front of us, they told us that the other, you know, this is just how this particular company does it, and yet we were able to look online and see that they had done it many other ways. So as far as ZDA recommendation, I would just like them to know that perhaps they should check the Internet to see how many other types of signs and designs are available with Dollar Tree.
I'd like to withdraw my motion.
Okay.
That's why I stand up.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
So you have no motion on the floor, we have no discussion further. So I'd say possibly...
We have one comment.
You're gonna send...
Can we include my comment?
Yeah, that was your comment.
Right, that's it.
Yes.
Yeah, so we'll make a motion to pass on to ZDA with just that one comment?
Yes.
That works.
Does anyone else on the board agree with me?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
I don't disagree.
Mark, do you have opinions on it?
I'm gonna abstain from too much opinion because I wasn't here for the original vote on the building and, you know, I think the street sign is actually one half a square foot smaller than what we allow, but I think some of the height criteria and overhangs do require special permit. So again, they're not asking for bigger. I think it's just a height change in overhangs from the actual structural column that holds it would be the variance, and they claim new technology allows that to be more stable, but they certainly have enough signage on the building. But again, they're not asking for a bigger sign at the street than we allow as a town without a permit. It's just the construction of the street sign, I think, is different because it's 31, 31 and a half square feet, and we allow 32. Right.
Yep. Okay, so comments being in the record. I'd like to go on to...
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, number two on the agenda is to approve the meeting minutes for March 14th and June 20th.
I read these, Brian, and I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for March 14th. However, I was absent on June 20th.
I'll second his motion to approve March 14th. I also have read those.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna abstain just because I wasn't on the board on the March 14th minutes, and I don't think I was present, I think I was away for that meeting. I tried to come to some of the previous meetings, but I wasn't here for that one.
Okay. Does anyone want to move forward on the June 20th?
I know who accepts that decision.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. No.
I was just gonna thank you for sending the email regarding the Fuller Shores thing, for following up on that. Sounds like they don't have any updates yet.
No. They're not willing to, well, they don't have anything as far as an engineer goes?
Mm-hmm. It's too bad because I don't think it's that expensive. I mean, you're an engineer, I mean...
Yeah, I know.
It can be involved.
Right. I have a feeling they, yeah, I don't know what they have in their coffers, but...
Maybe hit a financial wall?
No, it's a big group.
Yeah.
It's not that much per group.
It's a big...
Maybe they're looking for...
There's a lot they fill the room.
Maybe they're looking for somebody to answer the question the way they want it to be answered, and it's not gonna get answered the way they want it to be answered. I had a very good conversation with the town engineer, and he more or less told me what I told them. Yep. And he's gonna tell their engineer what I told them when they have a conversation.
That's great.
Done, over. So I think they're waiting for somebody to come up with the, with the verbiage that they want to hear, and I don't think they're gonna get it. So number three, agenda number three, is the Fuller Shores update, nothing. The zoning change update, is that for the...
Marijuana.
Marijuana. Yes, we do have something as far as that's concerned.
It's in the packets, Brian.
Yes.
Actually, it's going for additional.
What's that?
I think it's an additional paper, too.
Yes.
Yes.
I think it's these ones, yeah, with the...
I'll have to...
Two and three? Well, actually, one, two, and three.
Right.
Did you see the map that Zink made with Lorraine's help? Lorraine and Zink made a very good map with the two colors.
No, I haven't seen that.
It was... It's very good. It's the best way to view this. I know you have to list it as lots and, you know, and all the addresses, but the actual color-coded map is very good, easy to follow, so...
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I plan on updating that map a little better because I kind of did it by hand, so I'll do it a little bit more professionally with, you know, the overlay piece of it. Once it gets to a town meeting, gets approved, then we can address the zoning map as a whole instead of...
Do you have it with you, Zink, from two weeks ago?
Pardon?
Do you have it with you from two weeks ago?
I do, I do that.
I think I do.
It shows how, well, you'll see, it shows how the industrial park is carved out excluding the properties that are outside of it, you know, and then it includes the entire part of Millennium Circle.
So when you say the properties outside of it, like Dennis and Lurkens, those pieces there, 79, that were part of the industrial zoning?
Well, they're industrially zoned, but they're not...
That's correct.
Correct.
Rousseau's, Rousseau's is not here.
Right.
Correct. I'm saying...
Which is industrially zoned.
I understand, so you...
Yeah, but we weren't considering that as part of the...
Right, correct. Correct. What I'm saying is those are the ones that are excluded, however, still industrial. They're not in the overlay.
Oh, cool. Thank you.
Only the addresses on Kenneth Welch.
Yep.
And then on Millennium Circle.
Correct.
Which carves them out of the industrial area, however, it was still part of the industrial original bylaw.
Right. One of the parts of the...
So that Millennium Circle didn't change at all?
One Millennium Circle is on Harding Street.
It's...
But it's part of, it's contiguous with, everything is on Millennium Circle.
And even though that looks like it's carved out, that's exactly how it's zoned right now.
That's why it's not so hard to find all those words accurate.
Whereas that, it is doing some exclusion.
Wait, guys, you have it.
Right, so these pieces...
And that tail right there, and that's it.
I'm glad that was carved out, both of those, so that's good.
Well, yeah, it keeps it on this street instead of spilling out into...
Which I think is the intention.
Dance Studio and...
Exactly, yeah.
I think it's great.
This is the intention, I guess, I think this is what people in town want. Would you agree?
Well, this is in response to the group of people you were representing that night yet.
Yep.
This is specifically a response, and I think it's what they wanted.
I think so, too. I am gonna...
But as you said, too, there's the piece by the high school. Nobody's applied for yet, but it's still industrial zoned.
Right, but this'll limit...
But we're not, we're putting these two zones under an overlay district.
I understand that. What I'm saying is we're excluding industrial...
Yes.
...out of the language.
Yes.
And just locking it into what was the industrial, which the town all thought was the only place it would go.
Right.
And we're making that the overlay.
Correct.
No longer allowing these other industrial areas to...
Yes.
...have these applicants come in.
Yes.
I get it.
Do you feel that's consistent with what people want?
Off of 79, off of... I think it's perfect.
Okay.
Off of 79, off of Howland Road.
Right.
Yeah.
All the purple on that would be subject to...
Exactly.
And what we're doing is minimizing it to what the town, I think, thought we were getting. We're going back to the original bill of goods we thought we were sold, and I think it's a great...
Great thing.
And it's simple in the verbiage change.
Very.
It's about four words that are changed.
Yeah.
We're stricken to bold.
One of the, one of the important, just as sort of a side story, the important, one of the important things striking, number three, striking the following uses from 413, it was starting, this was starting to build up if we were gonna start excluding and including things as that part of it. We, what we never did, we never caught up to the industrial solar power. The industrial solar power also is a very similar use as elsewhere, but it wasn't included in the table of uses, and this is where it would have fallen. Now we don't have to do it that way. Now we'll have to, if we want to, if the town wants to, we can do a very identical process to this.
Solar overlay.
Yes.
With the solar overlay.
Yeah.
And any other, you know, any other sort of thing.
Special permitting type use.
But now we're just organizing it differently than we had it organized before, and that I think Katie did a very good...
Does anyone have an issue with the solar power?
No, no, no. This is just a matter of bookkeeping. I just love to put things in order and put tabs on them.
Well, to what you said, though, Brian, I think that some people may have an issue with where it went on Crooked Lane.
Mm-hmm.
From an open space...
Right.
Scenic roadway.
Right, but, well, was, is that considered a scenic roadway?
It has, yeah.
It was.
It was, yeah.
Is it? Is that considered a scenic?
It's not anymore.
On paper, it was. It was by the powers that be, it was signed up.
Well, the powers that be, the open space committee.
Open space committee had tabs on it. They went through buying it.
I think, the, I believe the...
I believe Crooked Lane was considered a scenic.
There were certain roads that are considered a scenic road.
I think it was.
It was?
I think so, I think that's why it was the way their heart was...
When I went to the substance meeting, people did bring that up.
But as a...
Not as an opinion, as a fact.
No, exactly, but the solar power is considered a, by right...
Yep.
...a use.
You need to ask her.
So to your point, we could do, I think your point is we could do a separate overlay district for solar down the road.
We could do exactly the same exercise.
Which isn't a bad idea. Okay.
At the next town meeting.
And I'm gonna sidebar really quickly on solar panels. I think it was Maureen and I were talking about impact to the environment, and I didn't realize, but Audubon Society, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, will actually do a review of a project to make sure it would be suitable for the environment. So next time we go through this, we can ask a solar developer...
Make it a requirement.
To make it a requirement to have Audubon review it before we do. Keep it up.
Well, natural heritage...
We should have actually had a requirement to have us review it.
That was really, yeah, tough. Yeah, okay. I like this, my only, and I think it is consistent with what I feel people believe, just as we had all discussed. I'm just gonna voice my concern again. I don't love retail in this location. I'm in the industrial park. I don't mind it on the millennial way, I feel that's more conducive to retail traffic. I'm concerned about the winding road and the truck traffic in this development for retail. I would be happier if the retail were limited over here. That's my opinion.
Okay. I, I see that, I can, I sympathize.
Do you think maybe the ship has sort of sailed on that a little bit? I'm just being the devil's advocate. You know what I mean?
We said from day one...
Yes.
We never approved, we saw plans where people, we thought maybe they were talking about retail, and we asked the questions, is that for retail? And they said, no, no, no. Okay?
Right.
So all I'm saying is, I live up the street from this, I don't mind these projects going in, I just worry about the traffic concentration for the other businesses.
But the beauty of it is this is north 79.
That's true, too.
Right.
The next...
Right. So I, when we made this proposal, and we, when we made the whole proposal for the marijuana, we thought we were gonna have some control over what was being done. Now that we don't have any control over what was being done, we really don't have a horse in the race. So there's not a heck of a lot we can do about it, unless you want to propose another bylaw stating that, that you would like to see retail marijuana going here as opposed to there. But, what...
One opens on Friday.
Pardon me?
Oh, which one?
I believe the Vital Med Building. I don't know what that one's called, but I, I was told by a gentleman at Talbot's, he reached out to me because of the parking issue that was kind of being thrown around at one point in Talbot's parking lot.
What parking issue at Talbot's?
That somebody might bus the cars over there and bus them from Talbot's parking lot.
Well, hallelujah, that's kind of a crazy thing.
They have a zero drug policy.
So are they talking about off-site parking in Talbot's parking lot and then busing them over to...
Well, I don't wanna get too far off the subject, but...
This is all...
That's a medical.
It's a medical.
That's a medical one.
It, I'm just saying, it's opening on...
Yeah, but we don't...
Opening for sale?
Yeah.
Shouldn't have that much traffic, I would think.
That's not that big of a deal because our main concern was retail and a major influx in vehicles coming to retail facility for retail, adult use.
Yeah.
And that's what our, our...
Who's on the list, Kathy? Do we know who's, I don't remember who's on that marijuana list of host agreements that signed up for the retail and what their address was.
I have that.
It really doesn't matter because we're not the approval authority.
I don't think retail was, has been approved. No, they have, we have a dispensary, that's medical, dispensary, medical and recreational trichome.
The medical was approved...
As a dispensary, medical and recreational.
Weaver.
But that wasn't a retail...
That was a...
Well, we didn't approve a retail section.
No.
We just, we just approved the medical.
No, because it's medical.
Right, the medical's...
It doesn't have retail.
Right.
And any retail is gonna be going through the zoning board of appeals.
Any retail, right.
Because they have the, they have the horsepower, they have the approval authority right now.
Nevertheless, my point is more so, the first, whatever form of dispensary it is, opens Friday the 19th.
I'm not gonna lose sleep over it.
I'm not either. I'm just telling you, I'll update you as far as the parking and how it impedes my business.
I'm sure you will.
I have my no parking signs ready.
I'm sure you will.
And like I said, the gentleman from the new dispensary has called some of the other businesses to reach out to them, and one of the things was with the Talbot's, and that they were requesting use of their parking lot, which they don't allow...
Right.
...because Talbot's has a zero-drug policy, and they're sort of adamantly against it.
Well, I don't blame them.
So interesting how it will play out. Again, I'm not really trying to change anything here tonight with this, but I'm just...
I'm sure if Talbot's has a zero-drug policy, they don't want people to be bused to their facility possessing drugs.
Yeah, they don't want someone coming.
To or from.
What?
To or from.
To or from, right, exactly. Well, they'd be coming back with drugs to be parked without any, and they'd be going to get them.
You don't have a lot, they might have a little bit left.
But the medical traffic isn't so much, they're clearly planning for retail.
Anyway, I think we're kind of getting off track here.
Well, you were, you were there, listening to many of our meetings as, on the other side of the fence, right?
Yep.
And what was your take at that time? Did you feel that we were approving retail?
I move...
Yep.
We hold a hearing on this matter on the 8th of August at 7:30, and we advertised said hearing in the Middleborough Gazette.
For...
Does zoning bylaw change?
On the bylaw change.
To do...
To have the public hearing.
This bylaw, this marijuana amendment.
Okay.
Can I make an amendment to your proposal, your motion? In addition to advertising in the Middleborough Gazette, I would love to see it as, create it as a Facebook event. I don't know if that's even possible. Yeah, because that's how a lot of people know.
Well, you can make the motion, I just don't want to accept it. We're not working on Facebook.
A Facebook...
It doesn't.
I'm telling you, that's how people know what's going on in the world.
I don't care.
I know you don't, but I'm saying a lot of people do. That's how they get their information.
Well, if it got on Facebook. Can we put it on Instagram as a boomerang?
I'm not gonna do it.
I just, that...
Can we?
What?
Can we put it on Instagram as a boomerang?
Just with your picture, not with mine.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So, are you good with the motion?
He's not. He doesn't want it on Facebook.
No, no, no. Are you good with your motion?
My motion's good. You can have another motion.
Oh, that'll be a different one.
That'll be a different one, no.
No, I'll leave it at that.
He wants you to stay away from his motion.
I'll let the experts handle how to communicate with the public.
I second Zink's motion.
Okay, so we have a motion? You did Zink's motion, Kathy, I'm sorry. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Good deal.
Barbara?
I said aye.
Do you want to do another motion?
No. I'll let the powers that be figure out how to let people know.
Yeah, it's...
I think... We have maps tomorrow. I love you.
What map?
These maps.
You want one?
Oh, does mine?
Yeah, she is wants to bring them home.
So, Priya, where?
I'll take them now.
Yeah.
And I'll work on it so that we'll have these for the town clerk.
Okay. I noticed up in the top corner of what we just voted on, the comments from Katie were, there are a number of ways that we can forward this, and the first one was list all the panels to be included.
Passwords, right.
Address, assessors map, and that's what we did here. So this is actually a complete document in and of its own.
Okay.
Later, under number two...
Well, the, number two does it the opposite way.
Yeah, does it the opposite, of having it on a map, and then we have to have a map of this for the, available at the...
Town clerk's office.
Town clerk's office.
Yeah.
But this, this I've done it by...
Very good. So agenda item number four, new business, review the following three letters regarding Chapter 61A land. I know that's English.
Yeah. And you know that writing stuff.
Yeah. Curse it.
I do not have an attorney. Why, you don't give him an attorney's...
61A is recreation, is that right?
I believe so. She used to hunt, I mean, or she used to let people come in and hunt.
Paulie?
Yeah. So that was its, I mean, she didn't farm it.
Right.
The, no, the agenda item list says 61A, and the letters say 62B, both pages. Does that matter?
It's just for you guys to read, so I didn't notice that.
And she states she's not an attorney, so...
Well, but she just goes one.
Well, clearly, it looks like it was professionally done.
It was.
So we should expect to see wish something in that six months.
Thank God.
Where is Mr. Freitas's? Lincoln Street, Warren Street. Mr. Freitas?
From 61.
For one home.
And the rest of it still says, there's a lot of farm land behind it.
Yeah. That's, that's your apple orchard, right?
I believe. That neighborhood was full of, was full of...
Yep. And then there's Mr.
It's interesting, uh,
Now, wouldn't the ma, wouldn't the cranberry, um, one, that one should have been B versus A? I'm just, uh, curious. I don't know how they're categorized.
I thought 61A was farmland. It was agricultural.
And the other ones are recreation?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Did you notice this? Or are we?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is that about right?
It's about
It's about right.
What?
It's about right.
Sixty-one thousand? Sixty-one seventy-nine thousand? For the lot?
Yeah.
This is the whole plan. Before my time.
No.
Yeah.
I thought you've been supervising for a while.
What?
I thought you've been supervising for quite a while.
Well, this is, um, eighty-seven.
Oh, that is before your time.
Yes, it is, yes. This is, um, Al, Jim, Ken, and Kevin St. George.
I can't imagine the town would be interested in purchasing the individual parcels. The bigger parcel, I can't speak to that. I don't know. But the other two that are just for single, family use, single-family use, you know.
This one's from the Massey Cranberry Company? If it's going to be lived in by one of the family members, then it doesn't come out of 61A. And there's no, right?
The, uh, the individual one, yes. But it doesn't, it doesn't get a first refusal.
Right. So, yeah.
But it, it'll get taxed as a plan of residential property.
Right.
Now.
Yes.
When after
From now on.
And after they get the paperwork from the registry assigning it its own and not by
Right. And they pay the back taxes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think they have to pay the taxes.
Does anyone have any issues with any of these? They don't? Awesome. Thank you. Because it's family, remember?
Yes, because all three of them own it together and she's separating out and doing that.
Mm-hmm. A house, one, one lot. I would entertain a motion on all three of these.
We'll make that motion.
That we'll approve.
That we will approve.
That we will recommend approval.
Recommend approval for all three.
Second.
And, and place them in the file, yeah?
Yes. And the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Peter's seconded Kathy's. So the next on our agenda is? Yes. Folks, do you have anything for us?
Nope, just listening up.
Really?
I lived in Lake for seven, three years and I've never been to a planning board, so I figured I'd check it out.
Oh, nice to have you. Thanks for coming. We meet every two weeks.
I'm Pauline's brother-in-law.
Oh, you are.
Pauline, Ashley's brother-in-law. Nice to meet you. Pauline was, um,
She was secretary, no?
Yes, she was.
I remember.
I just had a question about the 61A. I really don't understand it considering that, you know. How long is the 61A in effect for?
Until you take it out.
To, but there's no set time?
No, no.
You, you have to redo it.
And there's
Every, so how many years?
There you go.
Every year.
Every year? I thought it was every ten, but, okay.
I will follow up on that and I'll send you something, but
I, I, I heard it was every year too, but, but they, they always roll it over. It doesn't, it doesn't become an issue.
I think the ten-year mark has to do with if you don't have it in for at least ten and then you try to develop it residentially.
You don't come down.
You'll, you'll get hammered with the taxes.
Right.
That's, that's what I was gonna
Yeah. And I think that's what the ten-year mark is, is to leave it in the conservation state for at least that long so that you're not harmed by the taxes when you take it out. Sound accurate?
It sounds, yes.
Even though, even though the taxes, though, they weren't, like, we, we saw what the total tax bill came in the last one and it wasn't what I thought it was gonna be. It was surprisingly low. It only represented seven years, is that right? The past seven years?
Um, I mean, I don't know if it's seven years, but I know, um, that it is every year that it's
And that might also depend on, uh, some of the, this A or B matters, like, if one is for timber and logging, you have to keep a checkbook and run a certain amount off the property through the checkbook.
And the forestry has to come in and check it and stuff like that, yeah.
So that's probably the annual, to renew that, do, do the taxes on the property every year and probably have the filing to redo.
The, actually, the, uh, the town website, under the assessors, has a better, has a better explanation than is available on the state right now. For what it's for, it's, uh, I mean, it's, it's more of a, you know, it's not like all legal, it's like a colored brochure. But it's a long brochure.
Is that the Collin Center?
Pardon?
Is that the Collin Center, the U.S. Collin Center brochure on 61A?
The Collin Center from U.S.
The brochure?
Yeah.
It's on our, it's on our town website.
Okay.
The, the one the, the one I had is, you know, I, I thought from U.S. But it's, this is the one that isn't as, the, the town's one is better, but I haven't
Printed it, yeah.
Mass Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, that, that's the one that I keep on What was your question?
How long? He just asked how long it's in 61A or 61B.
Automatically every year or do they have to come here for you guys every?
No, 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 it doesn't, it doesn't, it never comes before us.
They don't come for us at all.
It would be the, it would be the assessor's office if anybody
Okay. If somebody just keeps it, they file with them.
Right. Okay. So what did you guys approve tonight, Albert?
A change of use.
Allowing them to take it out of 61A.
So, right. So when you take it out, the town has a right to purchase and has a right of first refusal, um, which for the record, I understand, can also be applied to nonprofits. And I will tell you, there's an appetite, I think, for that. So it'll be interesting to see how these larger parcels work out down the road.
The, the decision on whether or not to take it is made by the Board of Selectmen. Along, not, not the assessors, but the Board of Selectmen will decide whether the town exercises its right of first refusal.
And more than, more than likely, the selectmen will not take it on first right of refusal because they're looking at making money, not spending money. And we've, we've taken some land, um, from 61A or B in the past.
Betty Snack was one? Was Betty Snack one?
Betty's neck was one, Ted Williams was one, um, Franciscan was one, Franciscan Farm up on Holland Road was one. Um, and it's usually a long and arduous campaign to get those, um, picked up on, um, first, uh, right of first refusal. I don't think they have the appetite for that right now because they're looking on making money. That's why we have the issue with the marijuana. Um, because they want to make money on marijuana. And, um, I don't think they'll make any of that up. Because they have
So you voted tonight to take it out of 61A?
Yes.
For so long again?
Well, no, no.
We, we voted to recommend that they allow it to be taken out of 61A per the request of the people that requested. There's three different parcels.
Right.
And we're, we're not objecting to that at all. And, um, we, we're not gonna make a recommendation one way or the other of what the selectmen should do.
This, this actually became, it, it'll go away as an issue and we'll never hear about it again. But a year ago, it came up as an issue because someone developed a piece of property and they did a lot of work to the piece of property without having taken it out of 61A. Uh, and it had gone through, uh, our special permit process. And, uh, we, we just, and, and we actually should have, we should have not gone ahead with that special permit process for the, for the industrial electric, electric one, because it was still in 61A.
Which possibles that?
The electric, the electric farm.
Solar.
I think that
The solar farm was 61A, but it
Right.
It hadn't been taken out.
But the town said that they didn't want to buy it. I think they had the option. We talked, we explored that and the town said, no, they didn't want to buy it. But I think subsequently, we've identified the fact that those, and I could be wrong, but I think those rights can be assigned.
The thing's point is, they still were supposed to take it out
And they didn't.
To develop it with solar.
And, and they didn't pay the taxes.
Hmm.
And, you know, so they, they have gotten way, way ahead of the process.
Yeah. Um, but if, if you really think about it, if it was under 61A and they were, um, developed it as a, a solar farm, then when they went to, to, um, to put the kibosh on the solar farm and bring it into a development situation, they'd have to go through 61A. It's not like they were developing it as, um, residential or industrial or business property. It was
We, we, we allowed it in industrial use. You know, as it was zoned, um, on 61A property, that's not a, that's not a property used
We missed the step. The step should have been what these people are doing, which is the request.
Yeah.
We, I don't know if it's us that missed a step as far as this
No, it wasn't us.
There was a loophole after us because we, the, the planning board allowed it, or whatever happened, it went to the selectmen. Based on, on or against the planning board's recommendation, they said, no, we don't want it. And then they let them go forward, but they never took it out of 61A. The, the property owner and/or the developer never pulled the trigger on
Which the
Removing the 61A title and they did industrial development on it as it, agricultural.
So they shouldn't have gotten a building permit.
In the zoning enforcement official.
Uh, I, yeah, I don't know what the stopgap is.
I know.
But I think that same point is, it, it happened and they never, you know, maybe we assumed, everybody, all parties assumed it because they requested removing it, that they would.
The stopgap used to be Pauline would kick me under the table.
There you go. So Kathy, you know what that means? You have permission.
You can't do that. No, that's okay.
No, this is, uh, this is 61B recreational land. 61A is the agricultural or horticultural. And there are, uh, when you get, when you get back into the penalty tax situation, back under, they have plenty of five years written here and I see Penny skimming through ten-year, uh, things. So there's, there's plenty of dates within sixty to thirty. There's plenty of dates to follow. But, and they don't but this, this actually should be enough to get through it. This is from the Department of Revenue. Taxpayer's value is under sixty-one B, I believe, you'll be but it depends. See, the registry of deeds already has something in there for you. So it's whatever's in there that you have to undo, not what you tell us now. You know, they're bad yet.
And usually the engineers and/or the attorneys, they, they research the title and then they come in with the, um, the response to us, to what they need to do.
And I think they need to include a contract. We need to see a copy of the contract. Because in order to exercise the right of first refusal, we have to know, um, what the
Value.
Value of the property is.
Wow. Just bump on through, um, this.
You're easy.
No, I'm here as an interested observer. I'm making sure I make the rounds and make sure I see everyone.
No way.
Nice to have you. Come anytime.
I see you on TV all the time, guys.
Wow. Entertainment standards are a little low.
You're gonna care more about your hair now.
What?
You're gonna care more about your hair now. You realize all these people are watching you.
I don't care about my hair.
All right.
Do we need a motion for the next meeting? Or is that just
I think we're all settled by next meeting.
We need a motion to adjourn, which I'll do.
Yes.
Oh, on, on Monday, uh, our original letter went to, uh, is going, I believe, to the selectmen. The, about this motion, uh, the marijuana motion.
Yeah. I think they've already got it.
Oh, they got it? Yeah, they got it a month ago. But the, but they haven't had it on, they haven't talked about it yet.
No, but the response from the attorney
Yeah, I think they're on board. I mean, we'll see what they say, but they have another meeting, but I think that's consistent with what they're
Is, is anyone gonna go?
Well, we, uh, we're gonna have a meeting on this, our next meeting. To approve right? I, A, or otherwise?
No, we, we, we voted to have the hearing.
Right, we're ready till
And now we're gonna do it.
August 8th.
Do an hearing on August 8th.
On what was given to us tonight?
Yes.
Yes.
What time is the Board of Selectmen's meeting? Is it 6:30?
No, it is at four o'clock on Monday.
Okay, well, that's tough because I'll be at work. Um, I will put it on my calendar and I'll try to go to that meeting.
You could always write a letter if you had something that you wanted, some of your meaning in the letter file also, or, you know.
It was just, it was just as they had, if there was a question, uh, would be the only thing, because it's pretty it's pretty straightforward, especially when you look at, when, when you see Lorraine's map.
Yeah, agreed. Should we ask that Kathy gives a copy of the map to, for them at that meeting? Because that is very helpful.
Yes.
I'm sure Lorraine will do it.
Yeah, okay.
That's working.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.